Commissioners Court of Brazos County will meet regular session on August the 18th, 2020, 10:10 a.m. It's actually 10:16 in the Commissioners' courtroom in the County Administration Building to Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is the indication pledge allegiance to the U.S. Texas flag and Commissioner Barry will lead those.
Please bow with me. Father, thank you for this day and the many blessings you bestow upon us. Please be mindful and grant us wisdom as we do the business of the citizens of Brazos County. Please take special care and watch out for our first responders, our military men and women, and our essential workers, and especially look out for us schoolchildren, teachers, and staff as they go back to school this week. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second item on the agenda is a call for citizens' input and our concerns. Hearing none, we will move on to number three, approval of donated and unclaimed property left by inmates leaving Brazos County Jail.
Move approval, second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number four is consideration and approval of resolution authorizing notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation.
Okay, you might want to turn the volume up, Judge, to see if they're there.
Okay, if we get them.
I'll offer a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Okay, who's on? Dan and?
Dan and Denis Whaley, I think.
Dennis, okay.
Good morning, Judge. How are you doing?
Good. Dennis.
This is the notice of intent that is required to be published prior to the issuance of the certificate of obligation. So this is just the first step that we need to go through in order to issue the certificates.
Okay, all right. And as we go through the budget presentation this morning, there's a number of capital projects that would be, that this money could be used for. So, I mean, that's what we've had discussions in the budget before, but that's what this is. So this is the first step. Is there any other discussion? And it's to, to the bond issue could be up to 26 million. Twenty-five, I think, is where we're planning to issue, but it's notice is up to 26. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, and so it is unanimous. Number five is request from Facility Services for payment authorization to PB Parent LLC for fire hose inspections at the Brazos County Detention Center in the amount of $764.50 purchase order was not obtained in advance.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number six is request from Facility Services for payment authorization to PB Parent LLC for fire hose inspection for Brazos County Administration Building in the amount of $208.50 purchase order was not obtained in advance.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number seven is consider and take action on possible county burn ban. And Jason.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. We're still dry. We got about a half an inch of rain the night before last, and it really didn't do much for our numbers. Our county average right now is at 602 on a scale from zero to 800, 800 being the high. So we've crossed that 600 threshold. Our maximum KBDI number is 723, and that would be on the northwest side of the county, and then 438, which is on your very southern end of the county. We've had significant change since about a week ago. Our numbers have raised or went up 131 points on the low side, 28 points on the high side, and 65 on the county average. Two of the four volunteer chiefs are now requesting a burn ban. The other two are, you know, kind of in limbo. They're really not requesting one just yet. That's where we're standing.
I don't know really what the forecast is, whether we've got anything. Have you, did you have a chance to look?
We've got a couple of tropical systems that we're watching the Atlantic. Other than that, if those don't provide us with any, any kind of precipitation, then we're not seeing much on the, on the scope.
I know it's awfully dry out in my area.
Yes, very dry.
So.
Yeah, Precinct 2, I guess, is that 700 number that you're referring to?
Um, so there's parts. It's very small parts that are in that 700 range, and most of that's going to be, those small parts are on the northwest side, but Precinct 2, the northern side, north of University Drive, are where you're starting to see your, your high numbers.
And your precinct fire chiefs are two and four that are requesting the burn ban?
Uh, the fire chiefs for Precinct 3 and 4.
Three and four.
Are requesting it.
And here in 2.
2 and South Brazos County are wanting to hold off right now.
One of the lines on, on the fire district precincts are different from the district lines, so.
Yeah, I know.
So.
I don't know if that we put in a burn ban.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made seconded to put in the fire ban. And I really, I, I know that we've got two that are still kind of, you know, it's not as bad maybe in that area, but it has gotten pretty dry. I know in, in some of the areas around that I drive around, it's dry. So, and if there's nothing really looking in the forecast, I, I really think probably it's a, maybe a good idea to go ahead and implement it. If we happen to get rain, we can always lift it.
Well, what usually happens, Judge, is we put the burn ban in place and then we get the rain.
We get the rain.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I seconded it. I know that'll make it rain. I also washed my car, so.
Okay, so we got a motion to second to impose the fire, our fire ban. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number eight is approval of an order dividing one election precinct and creating another election precinct due to City of Bryan ordinance 2410 annexing 8.47 acres.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number nine is approval, approve order dividing one election precinct and creating another election precinct due to Bryan ordinance 2372, annexation of 151.7 acres.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number 10 is approval of purchase of CFA equipment and supplies from McKesson in the amount of $171,001.71 for COVID testing Brazos County employees and inmates. This includes 3,700 testing kits and equipment in order to provide testing through December 30, 2020.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number 11 is approval of the order exempting purchase of equipment and supplies from testing, for testing county employees and inmates in the COVID-19 esri required by Texas Local Government Code 262.024A2 to preserve and protect public health or safety of residents of the county.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number 12 is approval of memorandum of understanding between Brazos County and Brazos County Health District for public health emergency funding.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number 13 is ACA Reporting and Tracking Service 2020 Renewal Confirmation Program Agreement with, for Form 1095C required to be sent to the employees with health insurance.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number 14 is contract renewal with Hayes County for juvenile detention and residential services.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number 15 is amendment for contract 20-067R for cutback asphalt with Cleveland Asphalt Products to accept decrease in pricing.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion.
I second that one again.
Yeah.
Motion to claim.
Yeah, always glad to see those.
Motion to claim. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number 16 is amendment to contract 20-075 for asphalt oils and emulsions with Cleveland Asphalt Products to accept a decrease in pricing.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number 17 is approve of contract number 20-145 License Agreement with Odyssey Ware and Ingenuity for Juvenile Department.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number 18 is war to bid number 21-010 for water treatment with Fort Bend Services, Inc.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number 19 is renewal of 21-011R for fire extinguisher, sprinkler systems, inspections, maintenance, and testing with pie, Barker, fire, and safety.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number 20 is approve of contract 21-019 Risk and Needs Assessment for Brazos County Juvenile Department with Noble Software Group LLC.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number 21 is consider and take action on Bryan, Texas utility permit to cross Matt Wright Road with an overhead electric plan 2.12 miles west of 159 FM 159 located in Precinct 1.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number 22 is consider and take action on Brazos WiFi utility permit to construct 10 roadboards for installation of fiber optic communication cable for internet service on over reliance roads sites located in Precinct 2.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number 23 is final plat of Messina Hoff Estates Lot 25R1 through Lot 25R5, being a replat of Messina Hoff Estates 25, 5.24 acres, volume 13,445, page 294, Thomas M. Splain survey A-53 Brazos County, Texas, site located in Precinct 2.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number 24 is the final plat of O. Spanish Trail Phase 1 Block 2 Lots 5A and 5B, being a replat of O. Spanish Trail Estates Phase 1 Blocks 2 Lot 5, O. Wilcox survey A-27234, L. McLaughlin survey A-38, 6.092 acres, Bryan Brazos County sites located in Precinct 4.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries. Number 25 is presentation of the Brazos County Proposed Budget for Fiscal Year 2020, 2021. And I think, do you have that?
I haven't gotten anything for.
Uh-oh. Do we not have a?
Did you send it after I came down to court, maybe this? Right before court, or I didn't get anything for presentation?
So, Amanda, do you have it via email that we can?
I don't even know. Let me see if I believe it.
We were working on this, I know Irene and Nita, until later last night and then this morning again. So, it's, there's been a lot of work going into trying to get it done, but.
So are you the only one with the printed copy?
Right now. My hope was that we could put it up on the screen, but.
It's trying to log into my email, but did you email it to me, Irene? You may have after I came already down. It's trying to log in here. Okay, I'm logging. Oh, yeah. 10:32 a.m. it says, but, or 10:30? Okay, oh, okay. I should be able to just slide it over there. I don't know if Trevor just hit me up. There it is. Judge, it's up there.
Is it? Okay, all right. I guess you'll run the.
Just tell me, I would.
Okay, all right. Yeah, here's.
Do you have copies for us?
I asked. She said no.
We were, I didn't get this one until just before we came down, so.
I can email it to you guys after.
Please. Okay, please do.
So, this is the index of the budget that follows, so take a look at that, then skip next to the, next page. There you go. So the 2019 appraised value was 18.4 billion, and the 2020 is 18.6 billion, and that's comparing the, the property that was in 2019 as opposed to what it's valued at in 2020. So it, that property went up 200 million, more or less, and then there was 408 million that was added, that's new property that was added to the, to the, the valuation in 2020. So the next is the proposed budget for 2019 was 249.
Oh, sorry, Judge.
That's a, yeah, you're right. It's, that's correct. It was 249 million. This year's proposed budget is 262 million, so it's an increase in the budget of 13 million. But we've got a breakdown, the next page is a breakdown of how that, that comes about. So you'll see that the general fund is actually a reduction of 6%. That's where we went through and we scrubbed what we could and reduced things, so that the general fund went, goes down 6%. The health endowment fund, which is, that's the tobacco settlement money that, it was money that the state years ago had, with cigarette companies, had got a settlement, and it was for, it was to repay all the counties back for the money that they'd been spending on indigent health. And so that's money that's available to be used for pretty much anything. We've, we've still got that amount of money, the 886,600, in, in that fund, you know, that would be available, and if you don't budget it, then you couldn't use it. Now, we, we really don't have a planned use for it, but, and maybe we won't use it at all, but it's, it would be available by putting it in the budget. The, the special revenue fund, which is, those are all for particular, special, it's funds that have to be used for certain things. It's just a requirement that, you know, that it's, I don't know, I can't think of a specific issue, but.
Would it be like recrimination?
Yeah.
Hot fund that?
Our district clerk funds are, you know, those funds that come in that can be used for specific things. And those were projected to go down about 6%. Grant funds are projected to increase about 1%. The debt service fund increases about 2%. The capital projects fund shows to be dropping by about 85%, but it's going to move over to the bond. We'll see that a little later on. It's not coming from general funds, so that, that reduction there.
I have a question.
Okay.
It's in red, but it's not in brackets. So is it an increase?
It's just a, it's an increase that I should have taken.
Okay, but it's just highlighted in red to, because it's the most significant one, and we wanted to draw attention to it.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And then proprietary funds, those are the health insurance. I mean, we don't, we don't have health insurance. We're self-insured, and so we actually pay for, you know, all the, anything that happens. And so that's, that's what the proprietary fund is, and it's an increase of 5.17. Then we, with the new law that passed a year and a half ago, there was terminology that changed, and the old terminology was like, for instance, the exec, effective tax rate is now called the no new tax revenue rate. The effective maintenance and operations tax rate is now called the no new revenue, maintenance, and operations tax rate, and the rollback tax rate is what it used to be called, is now called voter approval tax rate. And the, so the, the no new revenue tax rate, that's the new term for it, is .488409 per hundred dollar valuation. That would, if, that would bring in the same amount of money that, that we brought in last year, and it's because of that 200 million, if the, the tax rate could drop to bring in the same amount of money, it drops by less than a penny, but, because we were at 4975 this year, and so it could, to bring in the same amount of money, would, would drop to 488409. So here's, the, the current tax rate is .4975 per hundred dollar valuation. The no new tax revenue we just looked at is .488409, and what we propose is .4950, which is a reduction of .0025. So it would be a reduction in the tax rate from what it was this year. And then this, the next page is the comparison of historical rates. When you, when you look at, there's, there's maintenance and operation, that's M and O, and then interest and sinking fund, which is what you pay for debt, and then you got the total tax rate. And so you can see in the maintenance and operations from 2016 to 2020, it was increasing, but it, from 19 to 20, it drops by about .007, close to that. And the debt portion of it has actually, it had been dropping, but it's gone up this year because we're looking at, there's going to be more debt that we had to budget in for next year for, for the, the debt that we're going to be issuing. But even with that, the, the total tax rate is going to drop by .0025, down to 4950, if this all gets, if it's all voted on and approved. So look at the next page. So here's, here's kind of what I, you know, we've, we've had this discussion, and we, a couple, three weeks ago, we approved that because we're under a disaster, that we could go up to that 8%. Had we, and we're certainly not, and we said it at the time, we were not going to go up to 8%, and in fact, if there was any way to stay at 3.5, we would do that. So here's what I wanted you to take from this, is that, that 8% of tax rate could go up to .54286, 2826. The 3.5% cap, had, had we stayed with that, we could go up to .518261. The, the current tax rate is .4975, and the proposed rate is .4950. So we're below that 3.5% cap that, that the state had said that they were gonna, you know, that there was going to be imposed on us. So we're going to be below that. And in spite of the fact that we, to, to try to make sure that over the next two or three years, that the county will still remain in a, in a viable function, we needed, I felt like, that ability to be able to do it, but we have said and intend to stay below that 3.5% rate, if there's any way possible, and obviously, we're doing that this year, and we're actually dropping the rate. Even, even to this year's rate is, would be below that 3.5%, but we're dropping it a little bit in addition. So that's really what I wanted to make sure that everybody understands, that in spite of the fact that we had to vote to, to do that, to be able to go up to that 8%, we didn't go there. We said it at the time, we're not going to go there. We're going to do everything we can to make sure that we get below that 3.5%, and that's, this budget will do that. Next slide. So here's the, the total debt that the county has, 79 million dollars, just over there, and of that, and that's if the, all that debt was paid off, the principal would be 64 million and interest of 14 million. This, next year's, to budget for, to make the payment for next year, the next year's payment will be 10,192,446 dollars, and all of that's the principal of 7,575 and interest of 22,617,000. And that, that is next year's payment. The first one is the total debt for however many years it takes to pay it off, and, and the second one is what is next year's payment. Okay, so now we'll go to personnel. The, under the county judge, we added a support specialist. We're, we're dealing with all this grant and COVID stuff and all that. We've, we need somebody to help take care of that and some, a lot of other duties, and so that position was added in for that. Risk management has had worlds of work and has been, needed somebody to help, because both of this, both the risk manager and her second position have been out of the office a lot, and they need somebody to be able to take care of business there. So we added a secretary position there. Information technology, we're dealing with the, the financial software, and when we went in, we, we looked at, there was a request by the information technology to add more positions originally, and we, the county's always tried to get by with as little as we could, you know, get by with, and, but we have found as we've moved forward, that it was going to take probably two more positions at least to, to try to get that. that it was gonna take probably two more positions at least to, to try to get that, not only get it implemented, but then to be able to maintain it over the next few years. So we put in two positions there to help take care of that. Uh, human resources has, has had, uh, their increase in workload has increased enough to where we felt like we needed to add another position there, and also in the auditor's office, we, we plugged in another positions there. Now, the next, I think there's three, are, uh, are really a, a reclassification of some things. So under records management, we took, uh, a, a position, a part-time position, and tur- and created, deleted that one, and, and created the transcriptionist. We needed a bilingual, uh, transcription, uh, for court cases. There are a lot of, uh, Spanish-speaking, uh, the, uh, the, dur- in court cases that have to have their, uh, transcribed from, from Spanish to English. And so, uh, we felt like that was something that was gonna be needed, and need somebody certified to be able to do that. So we took a position and changed that over, district clerk. Uh, I think the next page you look at, so there's where it came, there was two positions, a clerk four and a clerk three, that were deleted and created the, the, uh, bookkeeping, uh, person. District clerk needed somebody, really was more of a bookkeeper than, than those clerical positions. So that's what we did, was eliminate two and create one. Uh, uh, records management was, that's that transcription that we were just talking about. And then road and bridge, we created a position, then took those positions to create the others. So what we ended up with was a total of, we added fifteen positions and deleted eleven, so there's a net increase of four positions. Uh, and there you see what the total was, of county employees. We didn't plug anything in for cost of living. Uh, we all recognize that, um, we're in a time that that's, uh, it's, it's gonna be difficult, not only for our employees, but for everybody out there that's working, and for all the, the, uh, uh, businesses. And so we didn't plug anything for, uh, a cost of living or a merit pool in this year's budget. This, the retirement contribution, and you can see that, uh, we were funded, that our retirement is funded, uh, at, uh, at twenty, that, in the approved, it was eighty-six point six was in twenty, uh, twenty, and in twenty twenty-one, and it's gonna be because the stock market, you know, the bottom fell out of the stock market, and so it's funded at eighty-five six, uh, under the proposed budget, uh, because that, those kind of things impact all of our retirement. But we were, we are funding retirement at a higher rate than what's required. Required is fourteen point four two percent, and we're, we're funding it at fifteen point seven five percent. You know, it's important that we keep that, uh, that fund, uh, sufficient to, you know, that we won't have problems, won't cause the county problems in future years as people retire. Um, and then this is the health insurance. We didn't raise the cost of health insurance. Uh, we're not adding anything, any additional, uh, raises, but we didn't increase the cost of health, health insurance. We kept that the same, uh, and as you, yeah, all the county employees need to take note that that, that, that wellness program, you know, gives the discount, uh, if you get your, uh, the, uh, we call this, the, uh...
I think the physical?
Yeah, the physical. If you get that, then, uh, it's, uh, you get a discount for, for doing that. So everybody needs to keep that in mind. I think that's coming up here in the next month or so, I think, maybe October one, maybe September. I hate to call a number, because I don't really know...
Yeah.
October, okay, October one, October thirty, the first, okay.
By the end of October.
Uh-huh.
Uh... And we're, we're keeping approximately the same ratios there that we have maintained over the past years relative to what the employee cost is compared to our, and Brazos County's contribution.
Yes.
Okay.
So, um, and, okay, so here's the insurance cost versus the, the employee cost. So this is what, the, the first column is what Brazos County, uh, contributes for health insurance, uh, for each employee. The second column is what they, it, what it costs an employee for theirs, and, uh, and then if, if you do your wellness program, then it's, that's, third one is what the cost would be with the wellness program. Uh, that, just to make sure, we point out that the county takes care of a, a pretty good portion of, of the cost of health insurance for their employees. Uh, and so here's what, there, uh, the, for several slides down, there's, for the certificate obligation that's gonna be, uh, issued, uh, here's a list of all the potential, uh, projects that it could be used for, uh, you know, facilities, service building, we've already purchased that, but we, we passed something several months back, that we could be reimbursed from that, uh, bond when it's issued to cover that, then the jail kitchen, and AgriLife, uh, JP precinct one, and Constable precinct one. Uh, then we had, uh, five billion dollars' worth of hail damage to, uh, roofs, probably more than five million above what the insurance may cost. We hadn't gone through and got bids or anything like that on it yet, but we're looking at that, that's, that was kind of an estimate. Land acquisition, and then roads and road and bridge equipment, um, building improvements, equipment, uh, and this in, internal emergency system, something we've been on the radar for a good while now to try to, uh, just in case there's a problem, to have a way for the departments to alert somebody that, you know, there's a problem, you know? And so that's what that one was, we, we haven't got there yet, but that's what that was. And then, of course, then the financial software that's been, uh, we've been working on, uh, equipment other, and then a far cliff, and a far cliff out at Expo. Um, and then road and bridge, these are some things that road and bridge needs out there that, uh, that, uh, were in the budget for next year, that could be purchased with, uh, with some of the bond money. Uh, vehicles, um, we, we actually purchased some vehicles for next year in this year's budget because there was a number of Tahos that were available that could be bought. We've had, we'd been ordering, and we actually ordered Fords, and, uh, they weren't coming in, and weren't coming in, and we were having problems getting things, and, and one of the dealerships had a number of Tahos, and so we just went ahead and purchased, uh, not only veh- uh, vehicles for this year, but we purchased some vehicles for next year, so that, because, you know, with this COVID thing's going on, and with plants shutting down and all that, uh, availability for vehicles was a, was a huge problem. So we've, we've already purchased some of those vehicles that would have been in next year's budget. Uh, so there's where the, the, that it will be available at that, uh, location linked to, um... And, uh, we will, provided, we will try to get everybody here, we, we have to vote on the proposed tax rate. And so we'll need to, to meet it Friday at, uh, two-thirty to actually vote on the proposed tax rate. Uh, and the public's certainly invited to participate in that. Um, and then I think, um... Let me see, did I write that down? Next was...
September seventh.
September seventh, that's at one thirty?
So thi- this is actually number twenty-six on the agenda.
Okay.
So, so there was the presentation. Uh, I don't know whether anybody's got any questions or comments before we move on to number twenty-six and, and establish the, the, uh, public hearing date. If not...
Just, just a couple, a couple of things.
Okay.
Uh, I appreciate everybody's work that went into it, uh, because we'd asked department heads to reduce their operating expenses by ten percent, and apparently, we had great compliance with that, or, uh, people actually did more than that, from what I've heard. And, and I wanna tell the people who, uh, were involved in that process, that holding costs from our operations perspective down, I wanna tell them thank you for looking at that. Uh, I, uh, do also like to see that we've got, uh, a lot more emphasis in this year's proposed budget on capital improvements than we have in the past, and I think that that, uh, is the role of local government during a period of time, when we want to be supportive of economic activity going on in the community, and I like that. I, uh, uh, really appreciate the work that was done on doing that, because there were a lot of things where we were kind of getting behind. I'd also like the fact that we're able to look at a, uh, debt service rate that does not increase significantly now or going into the future with, uh, our certificates of obligation that we've authorized today, as far as going ahead and doing that. Uh, I think it makes sense for us to use debt service in order to, uh, accomplish that capital improvements budget, like we've outlined, as far as that goes with rates as low as they are. I would, I would like to see, as I'd said in the budget, uh, meetings prior to this, us get closer to that, uh, no new revenue rate, uh, and, and at either forty-nine cents per hundred or forty-nine and a quarter, I'd really prefer forty-nine cents per hundred, but that would take, uh, probably about one point, uh, uh, from looking at the front page, that would probably take one point one million dollars out if we were to do that. Irene, is that about the right amount? One point one million dollars out. So I'd like to see us, if we can, scrub it a little bit more. I know that, uh, you know, we don't wanna cut things too, too close, but I do think that the, the maximum amount of property tax relief we can give people for this year, knowing that anything we don't use of the three and a half percent revenue increase, we get to bank into future years, uh, because I think that, uh, you know, we're, so many things up in the air as far as where property taxes are gonna be next year in evaluations, but I do like that two million dollar of additional, uh, property tax revenue added, uh, because of new property, uh, that, uh, we see in the budget summary there. So, uh, hopefully, when we look at our budget next year, we'll be able to look at things in a different perspective as far as what's going on in the state, national, and particularly our local economy to see where we are. So, thank you.
Okay. All right, um, we will move to number twenty-six and establish the date and time of public hearing for a proposed budget fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and that, uh, the request would be that it be at one thirty, uh, September the second, uh, yes?
Cut off our motion that we establish, uh, the date of September second, one thirty P.M. for the proposed budget for the fiscal year, our public hearing. And, um, as noted, at one forty-five P.M., we will have the tax increase public hearing on the same day.
I guess that's okay to do, Bruce, 'cause we don't have the tax listed on the, uh, that's the one I'd asked you about, but we only have that we're gonna establish it for the budget, not for the tax on the agenda.
We have sufficient notice.
That will be in the official notice that we sent, we post.
No, it's not on the agenda for consideration.
Oh, you're saying it's not? Then I will correct my motion to simply say we will have the public hearing on Wednesday, September second, um, on the two thousand twenty-one proposed budget at one thirty P.M.
And we could add that to the Friday meeting.
Yeah, I think we can add it on Friday.
That's fine. That's, that's the motion.
Second.
Okay, so, and I think we have to vote on the proposed, uh, tax.
That's gonna be Friday.
Friday.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we could add the...
We'll vote on it Friday.
August could be voted on Friday.
Okay. All right, so, uh...
We have the motion.
Motion is second for Wednesday, September second, for the, uh, twenty twenty-one proposed budget.
Yes, sir.
One thirty.
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Uh, number twenty-seven is tax refund application for the following...
Move approval A through G.
Second.
Motion made second to approve A through G, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number twenty-eight is budget amendments, budget amendments, FY nineteen slash twenty, forty-six point one through forty-six point fourteen.
Move approval, second.
Motion made second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number twenty-nine is personnel change status.
Move approval, second.
Motion made second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Uh, number thirty is payment claims, claim to be paid by Brazos County, claim number eight one zero two zero one eight through claim number eight one zero two one five three, and claim number nine zero 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 three eight four through cla- claim number nine zero 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 four one five.
Move approval, second.
Motion made second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Uh, next one is an acknowledgement of investment report in the quarter ending six thirty, twenty twenty. Uh, number thirty-two is juvenile director's report on inmate population.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Uh, we have thirteen juveniles in detention right now, nine males, four females. We have five juveniles in isolation due to new intakes, and twenty-five on electronic monitoring. And the kids are getting ready to start school. We will not have the teachers inside the school with, I mean, in, in the building with the kids. They'll be in their offices. We're gonna do that at least for four weeks to kind of determine how things are gonna go. I just don't wanna introduce five new people into the detention center right now, and they're very receptive to that, and they will be getting, uh, Chromebooks for the kids. And, uh, so that's the way we're gonna start out, our, our school year. Our academy program has started, and they are also doing remote school. So, anyway, that's the way we're gonna start out.
So, so Ms. Rickenson, the five new teachers, are they gonna be tested for COVID-nineteen before? Or during their employment, or...
I, I don't know that. What we're doing is they'll do the same protocols we're doing, and they have some protocols too. I've just been in contact with the principal, just discussing how we're gonna do everything, but they will not be in, their, their offices are down in the school area, and the kids will not be down there. So we will determine what we're gonna do about that, but they have to follow the protocols of mask wearing and temperatures and, and everything else, so...
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Um, thirty-three is sure report on inmate population, sure.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
Our population is five hundred and fifty inmates, four hundred and ninety-one male, fifty-nine female. We have fifteen with electronic monitors, and seven are pending. For your COVID report, uh, we have, uh, nineteen inmates that have tested positive and are being isolated. Uh, we have a hundred and ninety that are quarantined or restricted because they were in dorms that, uh, a positive came out of. Uh, we have, uh, detention officers, we have eight that are tested positive and are being isolated on, uh, return-to-work protocols, and three that are quarantined. Uh, we have one, uh, detention staff member, uh, civilian staff member that, uh, has tested positive, and we have one in quarantine. We do not have any inmates that are hospitalized. Uh, we do have two staff that are hospitalized. One that I mentioned last week, uh, is in the hospital, but improving. Uh, we had another staff go to the hospital on Sunday, uh, and, uh, so I wanna thank you for your prayers. And so I want to thank you for your prayers, ask you to continue your prayers for our staff and also commend the heroic treatment that they're getting at St. Joseph's Hospital.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, thirty four is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics.
I have one, I think, falls in line with the sheriff's report. I'm working with Punch Gonzalez, our district coordinator for the Texas Division of Emergency Management. And we have presently established non, no cost walk-up and and drive-through centers for the public. Some that have been announced are not for the public, but this is designated for the public and it's free. No cost to anyone. But I am asking for our constables, our sheriffs. I need a couple of people. The mayors of both cities. Our our health department will not be charged anything, but we do need the support of everyone to get the word out. It is impossible for some people to get the COVID nineteen testing if we leave it to them to pay for it. So we're trying to make sure that all of the community will have avenues of being tested and getting the help that they need. I have noticed in my precinct, precinct four, we have an awful lot of people that have passed. And the families report, oh, they had pneumonia. Well, we're going to get tested. I pray that you all will support it. And anyone is welcome, even if they're not in Brazos County, if they're not residents, they can walk up to. We're not asking you to verify your location, your home. We ju- we just need you to be tested. So we need the support of everyone, encourage your families and friends.
When and where will this take place?
It's going to be posted. I've got four locations and five different dates, so we're going to post it. And and hopefully, where's Ms. Smith? And and Michelle will, and Jason. And and let me just say thank you to Michelle and Jason. I am always citing things that I think we can improve on. And I appreciate that somebody listened. Michelle and Jason contacted Punch Gonzalez and he was the right person. So I want to thank them for that and for their support. We want everybody involved because it affects all of us. It's no corner of the world that's not affected by this. Michelle, did you want to say something?
So we'll be working like we had before on on identifying others' mobile collections, sorry, post-testing sites. We'll be working with the J to get that information out in a timely fashion as we move on.
Do we know when approximately this will be?
I have the dates. They are going to be September, pretty much the month of September. We're going to work at getting this out as quickly as possible. We're in places in the community like Pleasant Grove Baptist Church will be there September fourteenth through the eighteenth. Lincoln Center in College Station C, we're not bound by Bryan or City limits. It's all over. So we're going to be at the Lincoln Center September twelfth through thirteenth. Then we'll be back at Lincoln Center on the nineteenth and the twentieth. These are weekend dates. New Zion Missionary Baptist Church graciously offered their facilities September twenty first through the twenty fifth. And the Neil Recreation Center, we will work with them on September the twenty sixth through the twenty seventh. And when I ask for help, it's it shouldn't cost the county anything. We will need volunteers possibly to help with signing people up. But even that is provided, the personnel is provided through the state mobile testing unit. So all we need is your prayers and your bodies. Thank you.
And again, we'll be working with the EMC
Yes.
in the cities to get those support services placed
Yes.
placed in place to support those sites.
So
Okay.
I'm excited.
All right. Is there any other announcement of interest items or possible future agenda topics? I would like to say that Julie Anderson, who is our clinic and jail, a nurse practitioner and juvenile and she still does some work over, I think, at the health district. And she is a go-getter, excellent employee. She was recognized this past week by Daniel Stark. I don't remember what the award was, but
Remarkable person?
Remarkable person, yeah.
She really is remarkable.
She really is. She is an excellent employee, go-getter. She's she knows her business and she's as personable as anybody I've ever met. So I just wanted to mention that she she was recognized this past week.
Well deserved. Absolutely.
Call for citizens' input and our concerns. Hearing none, we'll adjourn.
And thank you.